Welcome, we are so glad you're here. Will everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Sure.
Kellogg?
Here.
Shoemaker?
Here.
Vaughn?
Here.
Pullen?
Here.
Hofstadter?
Here.
And Khan?
I called your name.
Okay. Let's start with community events. So you'll see there's some new community events on here from last time. The next bicentennial meeting is May 15th at 6:00 at the Chamber. We're gonna have a downtown cleanup. Taylor Sigler from HDM and I discussed this. We're gonna do it May 16th from 4:00 to 8:00. So bring brooms and gloves. We're gonna be sweeping the sidewalks, putting in some mulch, and just getting the downtown looking nice for the Peace Officer Memorial and Vintage in the Village. So, and that's from 4:00 to 8:00. We put 4:00 to 8:00, but the more people that come, the faster it's gonna go. So whenever we get done, then we'll be done. Okay, so I think everything else was all the things that we've talked about before. So we'll move on to the bicentennial. So we had to have an emergency design review board meeting last week because even though I've been on the design review board for eight years, I completely forgot I needed to take the mural to the designer review board. So they did pass that. So the cost to pressure wash the building and paint the building was way more than the actual mural cost. So as you all know, we got that grant from the Ohio Arts Council, and the Millersburg Eagles made a donation that covered the rest of our mural. And so we wanna thank the Eagles. Thank you very much for your donation. The wall is painted, and I am told she's going to be starting on the mural on Wednesday. So she's hoping to be done with that by May the 10th. So our grant was, it had to be done by June 29th. So I think we're well, well, well on the way with that. The bicentennial float. You guys will all be glad to know that we don't have to get the float. The float's already going to be there. The bicentennial committee is going to have a float in the Antique Festival Parade and in the kickoff parade. And the Antique Festival one, at least that I know of as of right now, is elected officials. So we can all ride on that float. Now, I'm not forcing you to ride on the float, just so you all know. But that's gonna be the float that we ride on. So the good, the good news is that that is covered by the grant from the bicentennial committee, so we don't have to worry about that. All we'll have to do is bring our own candy to throw. So that'll be nice. I also emailed Mill Street Photography to see if they would be interested in taking pictures of elected officials during the Antique Festival that we discussed. I thought that that might be good. They take beautiful pictures of the downtown.
So I was looking, looking at the elected officials, the picture that I had brought up at a meeting here a while back. And there's, there's a picture down at the library. It's got the elected official, well, it's got a number of elected officials in front of the courthouse on the steps. But not all of them are listed. But yet they're all numbered. There's gotta be a cheat sheet somewhere, and I don't know where that is. But it mentions about nine officials, and there's probably at least 15 or a little bit more than that. So, but they all have numbers on their person somewhere. And where that cheat sheet is that indicates who they all are, I have not found that, but I was disappointed when I saw that. Then there's another picture that has more elected officials, and it has all the commissioners on there. And it's got some other elected officials on there, and they're numbered as well. But anyway.
Well.
I'm still researching that, I guess, but.
That's good. Well, we'll make sure whoever's on there gets their name on there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When talking about the float, is that gonna be like with all the commissioners?
Any elected official that wants to be on it?
Of people from the townships that are elected officials? I mean.
Well, let me tell you. There's a lot of people that don't wanna ride on a float. We were, we were grasping at straws to try and think of people that we could get on these floats for the different parades, because people were like, "I'm not riding on a float." And I was like, "We'll ride on a float." They were like, "Are you sure?" And I was like, "Hmm, maybe." So, yeah.
Because there could be a lot of people.
There, there may be a lot of people. But these are gonna be big floats. The Chamber is, she's talking, she said they're, they're gonna be huge, so. Yes. I didn't get, I did, I called her about it, but I didn't get specific sizes. But she said they were gonna be big. Yeah. So that's, that's what's going on with the bicentennial. Is there any questions about any of that? There is. I talked to Taylor today, and we, we were talking about the kids coloring contests. I think we're gonna do that in the fall, because a lot of the teachers are doing testing and end-of-year things, and I don't wanna add something else onto their list for this year. So I thought we would do our Millersburg Village Council coloring contest at the end, in the fall. Okay. Any visitors wish to address council at this time? No?
Question, Walk in the Cemetery.
Yep.
What is that?
June 15th.
Oh, there it is.
Yep, June 15th.
Is that the one that?
That's the one that got resettled from last year.
Yep. That's the one that you're in. That's the one you're in, yeah.
Okay.
Have a caution ready.
Yep, yep. Get your bowler hat out.
I'm gonna do Yankee Soldier.
Oh, nice. That'll be awesome. Okay, minutes. Do we have a motion to suspend the reading of the minutes?
Second, Khan.
Pullen?
Yes.
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
And Hofstadter?
Aye.
Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
Shall move. Second.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Pullen?
Aye.
And Khan?
Aye.
All right. Bill Resolution 2024-09. We have a comment on the bills first.
Yes, when putting those into the system today, found an error, so they're a little bit less. The bills were 183, 078, 82, and that makes the total for this bill resolution
Are there any questions on the bills? Do we have a motion to pay?
I'll make the motion to pay.
Hofstadter? Shoemaker?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Pullen?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
And Khan?
Aye.
All right, Nate?
All right. The Design Review Board met April 10th and reviewed and approved the proposed new signage for CSB, planning and zoning review, pit master, pizzerias, signed variance from the previous month, Adam Hirschberger's freight container use for a storage shed on Fort Washington Road, and also the CSB signed variance. And we had a pretty lengthy discussion about revising our minimum square footage requirements for single-family dwellings. Currently it's 1,200 square feet. So I'm, I've compiled a list of the previous variances we have reviewed, and then, but I'm still working on, the board asked to kinda survey other communities to see how they're handling these requests, see if, you know, lowering the minimum is, is a good thing or not. So hopefully I'll have that done fairly soon and get back to the board on that, and then they'll make a recommendation to you guys. As, or, or not, depending what they decide. And then as Kelly said, the Design Review Board had a special meeting on the 16th. Haven't heard anything from Melway on our resurfacing project yet. We did place an order for the loader. The street department building, we, there is a little bit of an update. We reviewed the preliminary plans and gave them the okay to proceed to get those finalized, and then we'll get them out to contractors to get prices for the storage building out at the garage. And obviously nothing's been done on our building here yet. Last Friday, Joe Meglin with the ODNR, Urban Forestry Program was here, planted the tree up at Deer Run Park. Had, was there five or six of us were there to help out? So if you stop in up there, it's kinda between the pavilion and the amphitheater. Nice, uh, burrow, leave as well as plant it. Have a nice sign out in front of it. And then also the Arbor Day, the Tree City Boards Arbor Day Celebration with the elementary schools' first graders will be this Friday. Is that 1 o'clock?
2 o'clock.
2 o'clock? That's always a good time. All the kids getting their trees. It's fun. Nothing, we haven't done anything with the street department opening yet. Deer Run Park, we did receive a request for use of the pavilion and parking lot on May 18th, Saturday, from 4:30 to 7:00. North Star Children's Ministry. They've done this a few years. They set up jump house houses and whatever. It's kinda promotion for their summer program. Frog pong, is that right, Mary? So, would need your permission to do that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Pullen?
Yes.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
And Khan?
Aye.
I wanna make a comment about the tiny homes. Why couldn't that be zoned, just like mobile homes?
It could. That may be, that's what we're trying to figure out, if that's what other communities are doing, making it kind of a separate classification that they could only go in certain areas. There was a lot of discussion of, you know, if somebody has a 3,000 square foot home right next to a tiny home, there're gonna be issues there with evaluations. And I, I personally don't know that there would be, because it's not comparable, but I don't know. That's beyond my understanding or need to understand, so. One other thing I did just wanna point out, you've obviously seen there's legislation on tonight for the ODOT-SALT contract. And the reason it's an emergency was we received it April 11th. Thanks to Karen for sending it to me. Usually I get them. I never got anything. She sent it to me. It's due May 3rd. So this is the only meeting we have to, to pass that legislation to participate in the contract. So that's why it's an emergency. And that's it.
Thank you, Nate.
Yep.
Chief?
I just have something for executive session tonight, that's it.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Bobby?
Well, I think Karen and I are gonna tag-team this one. We have some issues that we wanna take care of for the transition for her retirement. My taking over, right? Okay.
I'm gonna try to get through this. Tend to be emotional. Bear with me. I'm probably gonna end up reading more of this than I am anything else. Okay. On April 29th, 1991, I walked into this building to start a new career. I really didn't know a lot about clerkship as a village worshipper. Government accounting was a little foreign to me. I was also informed that this was an elected position, and I would need to run for office this coming, that coming fall. Fall? While I had a background in accounting and payroll, this was quite frankly a tad bit scary. And every aspect of the job was done manually. You know, the big old huge ledger books for accounting, typewriters for minutes, checks, and documents. No computers. After three one-half days of training, I was on my own to learn and figure things out. Talk about feeling like you're being forbidden rules. Woo! All I remember thinking was, "What did I get myself into?" Looking back, I am grateful that I had the experience of learning on my own and doing the daily tasks manually. It taught me so much and helped me to understand how all the pieces of the puzzle fit together. I can't tell you, it was not too long till we went computerized. Thank the Lord. In 1999, I took on the role of income tax administrator. In 2001, the offices of village clerk and village treasurer were combined. So now I have three hats to wear. Holy cow. Recently, January 1st, 2024, the position of elected clerk treasurer was dissolved, and the appointed position of fiscal officer was established. And here we are. There have been challenges, difficulties, and stressful times over the years for the village, but the accomplishments, achievements, and success far outweigh the rough times. So chapter 33. As my career closes, here are a few fun facts. During my time, I've had the pleasure of working alongside nine administrative staff members, two solicitors, two police duties, five administrators, eight mayors, and 24 council members, not to mention numerous other village employees. So thank you to everyone who has ever been a part of the village people during my time here. Thank you for your support, your dedication to the village, your caring ways, and for your friendship. Each one of you are appreciated. Finally, thank you to the residents of the village for having trust and confidence in me and supporting me through eight elections. Without you, my career here would have never happened. I am grateful for the opportunities that have come my way. I have enjoyed my time here. But my work is complete, and now it's time for me to begin the next chapter of my life. I have learned so much during my time here. I am proud of the work that we have accomplished together, and I know that the village will continue to thrive in the years ahead. I am committed to ensuring a smooth transition. I am confident that you have a great individual, in Bobby Currie, stepping into this role, and she will do a wonderful job for you and the village. Please have grace and patience with her. I will complete any outstanding projects and work with my colleagues to ensure a smooth transition. Take care of your people. They all do a wonderful job. I wish you all in the village nothing but the best in the future. My final day of work will be April 26th, 2024. It has been an honor and privilege to be a part of the village team and work with such a talented and dedicated group of individuals. You are my village people.
Thank you.
With that being said, I respectfully request that council appoint Bobby Currie as fiscal officer and tax administrator of the village worshipper.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Pullen?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
And Khan?
Aye.
And that should be effective April 27th. I forgot that part. And one other thing, if council has no objections, I can give a note of office because of the notary, and I would like to give that to Bobby. Be a good girl. Hi, Bobby Currie. Hi, Bobby Currie. Saliently swear. Saliently swear. That I will to the best of my abilities. That I will to the best of my abilities. Preserve, protect, and defend. Preserve, protect, and defend. The Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution of the United States of America. And the state of Ohio. And the state of Ohio. And that I will faithfully. And that I will faithfully. Honestly. Honestly. And impartially. And impartially. Discharge the duties. Discharge the duties. Of the office of fiscal officer and tax administrator. Of the office of fiscal officer and tax administrator. Of the village of Millersburg, Ohio. Of the village of Millersburg, Ohio. During my term of office or until my successor is duly elected or appointed. During my term of office or until my successor. Successor. I have that effect. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Good luck, you're all, appreciate you.
And then to our Davis today. Okay. Thank you, Charles.
And Karen, you mentioned about thanking others for their dedication to the village. Thank you very much for yours. I mean, you've truly gone above and beyond what the job entails. And on a personal note, I appreciate all of the, the time that you took to explain things to me and answer questions, and then answer the question again, and maybe three months later again. Thank you very much for your patience and your dedication to the village. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you, Mark.
You'll always be a member of the village people with us.
And thank you, my family, for being here tonight. They surprised me.
That's great. Okay. Bob?
That's a tough act to follow. And that's for me and for Bobby, by the way. The retainer agreement from the Napoleonic law firm was in the council material. And I'd like for council to pass a motion to have, to allow Kelly to sign that. So that's the one thing I want to talk about. The other thing is that I got a response from Dave Hoffman from ODOT today. I had sent him a letter about the speed limits that we passed before. I called it Zone 1, Zone 2, and Zone 3 in my letter. Zone 1 being from Clinton Street up to Old Street, 25 miles an hour. They, they're gonna approve that. Zone 2 being 35 miles an hour from Old Street to North Corporation Land. They're going to approve that. The part from Newton Street or the square down to South Washington Street, No Name Street, they haven't approved that yet. We need to get them some more information. And I had a letter from him specifying exactly what information they need. And either Nate or I will be able to get that from Carpenter Marty that's.
I already sent it to them.
Oh, you did? Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Great, okay, good. So just wanted to keep you updated on that. That's all I have.
I'll make a motion to accept the retainer agreement.
Okay.
Mayor Hoffey sign it?
Sign it. Vaughn?
Aye.
Pullen?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
And Khan?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Upcoming committee meetings. May 8th is the next Business Housing Committee meeting. And I talked to Bob Hines. We asked for him to come and give us some expertise on some of the questions that we had. And I'll talk about that in my committee report. And I did wanna also highlight, May 28th is a Tuesday, which is our council meeting right after Memorial Day that we discussed at the beginning of the year. So I'm just trying to get those dates out ahead of time, so we all are aware of those. I have a proclamation here for Poppy Day. The American Legion Auxiliary Unit 192 will sponsor Poppy Day in the village of Millersburg on Saturday, May 18th, 2024. The Rim Rock Riders 4-H Club will be distributing copies throughout Mill, throughout Millersburg on behalf of the auxiliary. As a symbol of honoring the deceased men and women of our armed forces and to assist in the rehabilitation of our living victims of war, the American Legion Auxiliary 192, Millersburg, Ohio, and Rim Rock Riders 4-H Club will be distributing poppies as part of the auxiliary annual Poppy Day program. I urge all citizens of Millersburg to support this worthwhile program as I, Kelly Hoffey, mayor of the village of Millersburg, do hereby proclaim that Saturday, May 18th, 2024 be designated as Poppy Day in the village of Millersburg, Holmes County, Ohio. Okay. Are there any other committee reports other than Business and Housing Committee?
I can follow up.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So the Parks Committee met prior to the meeting, today, to today's meeting. And we talked a lot about Airport, well, we talked about Airport Park and, and how we're gonna proceed forward with pickleball courts primarily. And we had, we had a lot of discussion too about trying to upgrade the current baseball field based on some email feedback that we got from an individual or individuals. So we didn't make any decisions. I'll, I'll throw out the, the estimates that we did receive from VASCO. For two additional pickleball courts, it was $28,901. For four pickleball courts, $39,654. So we're talking about that. We had a good discussion about how to proceed. Maybe the plan is we're reaching out to try to get additional estimates to see what it would cost to upgrade the current baseball field. And we'll regroup and hopefully have another meeting prior to maybe the next council meeting and possibly make some decisions on how we wanna proceed at that time. That's it.
Sounds good. Thank you. I'm just gonna touch on a couple of things. All of council has the minutes from the Business Housing Committee I gave to you before the meeting. We discussed tiny homes and zoning changes because people are interested in less square footage because it's more affordable. Michael Mass suggested we need a creative vision and a collaboration between private and public entities to get things done. We discussed annexation of different areas at length. The current hip property is for sale and is contiguous to, some parts of that are contiguous to Millersburg. So we had a bunch of questions about that. The Millersburg Elementary School property was discussed. We had a lot of discussion about that. We had a discussion about a community improvement corporation, a CIC. So we had a few questions about that that we wanted to sit down and try and figure out how that works. Brett Gallion discussed the current business climate with us, and we decided to invite Bob to the next meeting to ask some questions. So that was our committee meeting in a very small nutshell. The one other thing that I have as far as committees. Brent Shrock, who is on the Tree City Committee, reached out to me. Janie Tish had not made it to any Tree City meetings. And so he contacted her, and I contacted her. And the Tree City, she got a new job in the Tree City Committee is while she's working. So she has resigned from the Tree City. And Rodney Arnold wanted to be on the Tree City. And so I talked to Brent, and he was thrilled about that. And so I would like to ask council to appoint Rodney Arnold in Janie Tish's place on the Tree City Committee.
Shall move?
Second, Khan.
Shall move. Second, Khan.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Yes.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Pollan. Hofstadter.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we have legislation Nate was talking about, um, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten and emergency resolution authorizing participation in the O dot road salt contracts awarded in twenty twenty-four. Obviously that was my title only. I'm not reading all of that. Are there any questions? Do we have a motion to suspend the second and third readings of this?
Second.
Pollan.
Aye.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Yes.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
And Khan.
Aye.
Do we have a motion to pass?
Shall move. Second, Khan.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Yes.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Pollan.
Aye.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
All right. So some old business. I talked to Becky Starner about the senior exercise equipment at Clay Street Park that we had discussed at the last council meeting. Um, she is going to go ahead and get two pieces ordered for that. I did ask her about Airport Park pieces. She said that she's been talking to some other villages as, as well as some, um, townships that have parks. And she would like to utilize, spread the money, spread the equipment out as much as she can. But she said if in the future there's more money, or she, if she has some at the end, then she would get back into contact with us about putting some down at Airport Park. Um, I have a couple thank yous. I would like to thank you the Wayne Homes Association of Realtors, specifically Tina Owens and Madeline DeWitt. Um, they did a cleanup project this Saturday at Deer Run Park for their Holmes County Arbor Day Project. They cleaned up the park and, uh, Tina reached out to me at the end of Saturday. And she said she wanted everyone to know that she was very impressed with how clean the park already was before they got there. And they didn't have a lot to clean up. So kudos to our street department for the great job that they're doing down there at Deer Run Park. Um, I would also like to thank Larissa Arnold for donating blankets. Um, I'm meeting tomorrow with Jason Troyer to discuss some disaster preparedness things for the village. Um, and the street department, I would like to thank them for filling the crater on South Clay Street on Friday. That was wonderful. Um, uh, I did get a phone call back from Randy from Northeast Ohio that Buckeye's supposed to be in this week to do permanent fixes on the two places that they tore up the road. So we'll see. Are there any other old business? Any new business?
I wanted to bring up, you know, when the Business and Housing Committee were here and Brett Gallion was talking about low pressure. Have you heard much about that from that part of town? Water pressure?
What part of town?
That would be.
Where Brett lives.
Yeah. That whole area is low. They're up by the tank.
How about for fire protection, the fire hydrants, I mean, would that affect it?
Uh, the, the volume's there. It's just the pressure. Like, most of the houses, like in the ledges in there have pressure tanks and little jet pump type setup to boost the pressure.
Anything else?
I have one thing from the business. You know I'm not gonna let you get out of your box. I have, I have a big mouth, so I don't need a microphone. I have a proclamation honoring Karen Schaefer. Whereas Karen Schaefer has announced her retirement from the village of Millersburg where she has served with distinction for thirty-three years. And whereas during her tenure with the village, she has demonstrated the highest level of leadership, service and commitment to duty in order to make Millersburg her hometown, a better place for her fellow and future residents. And whereas all the citizens of Millersburg are appreciative that Karen, as one of its native daughters, selflessly worked to use her integrity, knowledge and leadership talents for the service of the village. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Kelly Hoffey, mayor of the village of Millersburg in the state of Ohio, on behalf of the mayor and council and the residents of the village of Millersburg, do hereby recognize and congratulate Karen on her retirement and extend our deepest appreciation for all her dedicated efforts in making Millersburg a better and more prosperous place and wish her the best in all of her future endeavors. Thank you all. Thank you for all you've done. It is much appreciated by every single one of us.
Okay, with nothing else, I would like to adjourn into executive session for the purpose to consider the appointment or compensation of a public employee or official and to discuss details relative to the security arrangements and emergency response protocols for a public body or public office.
Second.
Pollan.
Aye.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Yes.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
And Khan.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful eve-